Call the roll.
Bird. McGinn.
Here.
Science.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsabak.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
A number two, approval of agenda. Any changes, Your Honor? Uh, no changes this evening to approve?
Second.
Call the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, set up public hearing for February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. For the consideration of sale of property described as lot seven in northwest quarter of southeast quarter and lots two and three, and north three hundred and forty-eight feet of lot four and southwest quarter of southeast quarter of section twenty-nine, township eighty-four, north range twenty-six west of the fifth P M. In the city of Boone, Boone County, Iowa, except highway and except the part of lot three in southwest quarter of southeast quarter. Said section twenty-nine described as beginning at the south quarter corner of said twenty, section twenty-nine, then north zero east one thousand seven point five feet of the west line. Said southwest quarter of southeast quarter to the point beginning then continuing north zero east two hundred and eight feet that's then south eight eighty-nine point zero three and a half east three hundred and five point zero feet. Then south zero west two hundred and three feet that then's north ninety west three hundred and five feet to the point of beginning of Boone County Isle.
Could you repeat?
Yeah.
Oh, move.
Call the roll.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Okay, B, set up public hearing for February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. For the consideration of the sale of property described as lot six and seven and block eleven in Fairview addition to city of Boone, Boone County, Iowa. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
C, set up public hearing for February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. To consider setting a max levy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
D, set up public hearing for February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. To consider the adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Okay, number four, Florida Standing Committees. A, Policy Administration, B J.
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, Public Safety, David's not here.
There's no report.
No report. Utility Committee, Terry.
I know report. We will not be having a meeting on the aid. We're not having a meeting? No, we won't be having it. Um, we'll, we'll reschedule something if, if something else happens.
Economic Development Committee, Terry.
On. We have one item on the agenda. This is about the home improvement grant program. And I'm going to turn it over to Brenda Dryer with Ames E D C for more details.
So good evening, Council. Um, Andrea, have you received an official notice yet?
I have not.
Okay. Um, we are anticipating that the city of Boone is going to be awarded seventy thousand dollars uh, from the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund to honor uh, major home improvement grant programs. So uh, I've got it. I'm pretty good aboard that it's passed the board. Um, and they're just moving through the process to distribute the final awards and contracts. Um, we'll match those funds with a little shy of twenty thousand dollars um in local funds. Um, so the plan as addressed uh, when we were talking about making that application. Well, once the official notice is made to the city, we will do a public announcement. We'll uh, have something on the radio. We'll do something on digital media. We'll send it through your communication channels as well as uh, other communication channels so that we can get the word out. Um, I'm proposing that we do two informational meetings. Um, maybe one during the week and even one maybe on a Saturday morning. Uh, whereby people that are interested in learning more about the program. Remember, this will be only open to people that uh, earn at or below eighty percent of the, of the median. So we'll talk about the income levels. We'll talk about what needs to be submitted in order to do that as well as what can and can't be covered. So as we get those data sets, we'll share those with you so that if you want to attend, you certainly can. Um, we'll make sure that we're very clear that this is a program in the city and city funds are going as the local match. So we're excited. I think we'll leave uh, applications open for about forty-five days. Uh, and then um we'll evaluate um, via probably the Economic Development Committee. I'll give them a scoring sheet and a matrix so that they can score the applications. Um, so that we're fair and transparent in terms of uh, how we scored those. I anticipate that we'll have more requests. We'll find out, but um, we'll give folks a year, almost a year to complete that. Uh, and uh, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to get it launched, but wanted to share the good news with you tonight that we are anticipating that. And so hopefully um um, sometime early in May, we can have uh, some of those improvements being made. I'll take any questions you might have, at least for what we know right now. So uh, we anticipate doing the match over two fiscal years. I think we talked about that. So we'll make uh, part of the match before June thirtieth, and then we'll do the second part of the match after year for uh, the first of July. So excited to get that launched on your behalf. And um, again, there'll be only one application period. So if you're hearing of things in the city, say, stay posted. We know we have funding. Uh, and we'll get, get folks to those informational meetings. They won't have to attend, but I would encourage people to attend so I can get their questions answered. So congratulations on the award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, Department Reports, uh, Building Official, Dave. Uh, Finance Officer Andrea.
Yeah. Um, as you all have probably heard about um what's going on at the state level on the property tax issue, I just want to give you guys some background information on, on what that's about as well as um, what is going on. So what happened is that uh, when they calculated the rollback, which is based off of annual growth um and a combination of um, ag and residential values, um they only can, you can only increase your value by four percent or the lesser of the ag or the residential. Um, in two thousand twenty-two assessment, which is our fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget year, uh, it was our first year where multi-residential taxes got added to the residential level. So there's no longer a multi-residential classification. Um, when they calculated the rollback and included the multi-residential, um, it increased the rollback from fifty-four point six five percent to fifty-six point four nine percent. It's an increase of one point eight percent. That affects our residential property tax owners because that would increase their property tax dollars if they're paying, if everything stayed the same, um, they would automatically increase their tax bill by one point eight percent. So what's happening down at the state is that they're scrambling to figure out how to handle the situation. Last Thursday, um, the Senate passed a bill that um, would require the Iowa Department of Revenue to recalculate the rollback, taking out the multi-residential values um, within two days of the bill passing. Um, it is now at the state, uh, sorry, at the House level. And if the House passes it and the bill gets signed, um, the counties then will all have ten days to uh, re-calculate our values. Um, and that affects our property tax dollars and based uh, that affect our general fund, that uh, money that's coming in. Um, by my calculations, and I'm doing a rough estimate of the one point eight percent reduction, is that it's looking about seventy-eight thousand dollars in our general fund um, reduction. Uh, if that is the case, I do feel that um, with the business tax credit that they also took out of our property tax dollars, um, and we're going to put that into just a revenue line, I believe we're going to be fine if it is at the seventy-eight thousand dollar um, reduction that I believe it is. Um, the do, the new deadline, if this is passed, um, is April thirtieth because we do have to redo that uh, certification page that I presented to you guys at uh, the January seventeenth meeting. So that page has to be redone. Um, as you can see, um, in our agenda tonight, we did set the hearing for the max levy resolution. Um, the reason we went ahead with that is because that is just setting our maximum amount of dollars that we can levy for. With the reduction of the values, we won't hit that. Um, in fact, instead of a four point one nine, if you did a quick one point eight percent reduction, you're looking at about half of what um, that max levy would be. Now, there's going to be a few changes because we've got the trusted agency um, numbers that I got to recalculate and the debt service um, numbers that I may have to recalculate based on the new values. But um, I did want to give you guys that update, and if as things come in, I will let you guys know. You guys have any questions? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney Jim.
No report.
Director of Public Works, Waylon.
Thank you. I just wanted to report that city staff, along with manufacturer, both technical support uh, from them on the electronic sign has been repaired by staff and everything went pretty good on that. So.
Nice. Thanks. Okay, next up, engineer, you had all that, Bill?
I do have that, sir. The first item is uh, an agreement with S E H for our RAS pumps, RAS pumps improvement at the wastewater plant. This is three uh, pumps that need to be replaced uh, because of uh, permits and, and things like that with the D N R. We're required to have an engineer handle it. So we're, this is the agreement with uh, S E H. Looking at about a hundred and sixty thousand for the pumps and uh, other items that's associated with it. Engineering costs are thirty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh. The Chair of the Utility Committee has, has uh, reviewed this as, and I've had a conversation with them. We're comfortable with this agreement. We actually reduced it uh, some from what it was. So there may be a change order coming at some point for engineering fees. And the reason for that is if the bids exceed the hundred and sixty thousand that we think they're going to be, then they would be entitled to um those fees. We're just not paying them upfront. This is the, right here. So if you look construction subtotal, the one sixty five with the thirty-two one for the twenty percent in uh, for the cost. Uh, so staff would recommend a uh, approval of this agreement.
So moved. Second. Call the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
My second uh item is a pay request, which is seeks a hundred thousand dollars uh, for, for the amount is one thirty-six, six forty-eight. This is for the uh, for King Construction on the uh, U V project. We've talked before and I, I've met with utility about the U V project and some of the uh, hurdles that were, and roadblocks that we're facing. However, it's recommended by uh, Fox Engineering as well as Perry from S E H who, as you know, I called in on this project several months back uh, to help us with it. Uh, they this will not uh, interfere with anything that we need to do in the future as far as liquidated damages. So there's a recommendation to approve uh, this payment amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Okay, I got it. It is, sir. Okay, next up, Public Safety Chief Adams.
Yes, Your Honor, a couple of items. Uh, first of all is our station addition. Uh, we've been working through uh, some new engineering numbers with our engineer to do some rebidding on those, that process of we've looked at whether we stay with the, the current engineer that helped us or if we look elsewhere. Um, and I would look at Bill to, for this, but Bill took a look at it since he deals a lot with engineering and we feel comfortable that we'll probably stick with the same engineers um, with the price um, uh, that we've been quoted. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
That, so it's still be greatly reduced compared to trying to, to find another engineer or use S E H as an alternative engineer. So we'll be work, working through that and trying to get the rebidding process here done uh, in a short uh, time. Any questions on that? The second item I have tonight is, as you know, that we're in an agreement uh, with the Boone County Hospital, the private third crew ambulance. Um, for a majority of the time that we've been in this agreement, uh, their agreement is to provide us with an ambulance. Uh, the, the ambulance that they provide us with is a two thousand and three uh, ambulance with about four hundred and thirty, four hundred and forty thousand miles. They've had to replace the whole dash on it. So those numbers are a little uh, out of whack on, on the actual miles that are on there, but somewhere well over four hundred thousand miles. Uh, it's well past its replacement time. Um, in speaking with the hospital, uh, city administrator and myself and the police chief had a meeting with the new C E O of the hospital the other day. Um, one of the things that was discussed was ambulance rotation, right? They're, they're, they're um pretty far behind on an ambulance rotation of keeping uh, ambulances rotated. Um, the indication that we got the other day was they have some money for an ambulance um, per, to, but they don't know on some reimbursements uh, through some Medicare, Medicaid money. Is that correct, sir? That she explained. So they don't know if they're going to be able to purchase uh, an ambulance in the near future where they may have to divert that money to somewhere else. What I'm going to ask for tonight, it is um request to put in assistance to firefighters grant in as we did with the, the fire truck um, and uh, for an ambulance. And that ambulance will be kept here at the fire station. Um, we would have to pay a matching fund. Uh, the good thing about this ambulance is we don't have to build a station addition or anything like that. Um, we could, this, it'll fit in the space that we currently have.
Question I was going to ask.
It, it'll fit in the space that we have. Uh, we'll have a little more control over the, the items with it. Um, it does require a five percent match. So that number looks like right now, um, we're finishing off a couple of the bid items, but it looks like our portion would be about seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars, um, which in the grand scheme of things for a three hundred and forty thousand dollar ambulance, brand new. Um, um, I don't feel is a, a ton of money. I think it's a potential great investment. And again, who knows if you approve this tonight, I'm not even sure we would get it, but it at least allows me to apply for it. And I would entertain any questions.
It would be city.
It would be city owned, correct? And we had that discussion with the new C E O and let her know of our potential intentions pending uh, the meeting tonight, uh, when we met with her the other day.
Seventeen thousand is a small price to pay for a reliable ambulance. Need a motion?
No.
Yes, I would need a motion.
Move to approve. Second. Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
You.
Thanks. Next up, Chief Weevil.
Your Honor and Council, I also am requesting to submit a grant application. Um, this is for the, through the Homeland Security. Um, it is for it's for a lot of things. Number, the, this whole grant application is for um anything to fight terrorism and equipment at all. So what we're trying to uh, accomplish is to get a, another U A S or a drone as a common, commonly called, uh, called. Um, that could be like a force multiplier, multiplier for us. Um, a lot of times we're searching for people in the dark and we can have the ability to put a drone up that has thermal and we can see where the people are before our people get to them. It keeps our people a lot safer. Um, with the, the infrastructure that the city of Boone owns between the water plant, airport, um, and the wastewater plant, it gives us some surveillance opportunities with, over that. Um, it's a a hundred percent funded grant, so there's no mon, numbers matching. Um, and we should know. Um, we have to have the grant submitted by February seventeenth, and I think we know within a month or two after that if we're, uh, if we get granted. So.
We have to have somebody that's trained to fly that.
Yeah, we currently do. Uh, right now we have one certified pilot and we already, this week we have two more officers going to be tri- excuse me, going to be trained to be certified pilots. Yep. Absolutely.
Moved. Second. Call the roll.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yeah.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, secondly on my list is a updated uh, civil service list. So we uh, interviewed another applicant uh, last week. Um, and we'd like to add his name to this ongoing list we have. Uh, his name is Shane Stormer. He's on the, the third one on the list there.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yeah.
Thanks. City Administrator Bill.
Thanks, sir. Uh, one item on the agenda, a few other just updates uh, after that. Uh, as you remember, uh, last year, the council approved Councilman uh, Bird and myself to go with the Ames Economic Development Commission on their uh, trip to D C to meet with our, our federal legislative uh, personnel. Uh, that trip is again coming up this year. Uh, it's April uh, eighteenth through the twentieth. Councilman Mormon and Councilman Bird have requested that they would like to go as well this year. We certainly think it's worth the trip. Uh, I will tell you that I was at an event a couple of weeks back where I met uh, with, along with others with Senator Urs, and I got a, a follow-up call from her Chief of Staff uh, on, if, we've talked about it here before about the lead pipe program that's coming of city maybe requiring a piece lead pipe. So we've made contact there. Uh, I told them my concerns about that program. They wrote them down. This is just good uh, to have the networking with the elected officials. Uh, I certainly think it uh, that it it's certain important for the elected officials to go. They certainly listen to elected officials more than they do me. I can tell you that. So they've requested to go. So um as well, uh, Reynolds Kramer, the C E O of Fairway. This year is the President of the Ames Economic Development Commission Board. He'll be attending. I'm not sure if he's got maybe one other going with him from Fairway, but I know he's going. I certainly think it's important to have a good Boone contingent there at this. So uh, I have money in the budget for this to cover it. So I'm asking permission for the three of us to go uh, on that trip in April.
So moved. Second. Call the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yeah.
Williamson.
Uh, just a couple uh announcements for you. So we did receive uh, another grant for the U V project. Uh, this was a uh Ames E D C as well as staff with this grant together. And we s, received two hundred thousand dollars. I will note that this is the third grant that the city has received on this U V project for a total of one million dollars.
Ooh.
So this is really good news. We appreciate the help from Ames E D C on this. Uh, so uh, we'll continue forward with that project. Uh, next, if, uh, a few things about E notify. I'm planning to uh, stop sending out the council notices like we have been over the past years on March first. That's a couple of months since we started this. Each agenda that goes out reminds citizens to sign up pre-notify. We're hoping they're doing that. If they don't, they're not though hopefully with us not sending it out the old way, they'll get on there and sign up so that they continue to, uh, to uh, receive the information. Uh, if you, is everybody in the council signed up for it? On E notify?
I'll check. I think I haven't.
If you have, you will notice uh, we did a uh, for example, a retirement article for John Rouse. He did a retirement article for Ed Higgins. We're going to have an article with Dave Aides as well as Waylon for new to their positions. Uh, and then we're other putting grant out Ames C, burned is, is also uh, made contact with Concept Works uh, who's doing this for us. So when they push out information, uh, it'll be sent to Concept Works. Uh, and I've been working with Eric from there quite frequently on articles, and he sends them to me for approval. In addition, he would like to uh, interview each and every one of you and do an article and share with the community who their council people are. So I'm hoping that you're willing to do that. Um, if you are, I'll give him the go-ahead and he'll reach out to you at some point. Try to set up, you're talking fifteen, twenty minute phone call maybe. Uh, just to talk with you a little bit, and then we'll do an article uh, on each one of you and send that out as well to, you know, inform the citizens as much as we can about city operations. And so if I'm getting nodding heads, yes, so I'm going to proceed with that. Uh, also, if you notice, we've taken down this uh, the sign up here. We're going to change the location for that uh, as part of our remodel. We're going to order I think probably a TV like uh, is that what probably going to end up doing?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and we're going to post that downstairs by the, the central business office. We feel more people will see it there. It'll be electronic. And it will be uh a continual message, a rolling message of information that we can tell them in another effort to inform the citizens of what we're doing. Uh, in addition, we're going to look at, once we're done with the city remodel here, about placing some TV monitors in here, probably three large ones uh, to put the agenda on and get rid of this big old thing here. Uh, once we get through the remodel and I see what, how much money we have left, then we'll move forward with that. Um, the Microsoft bids that we talked about uh, last meeting, I think, or the week before, thirty thousand dollars we talked about that we need to do. Those bids actually come in at twenty-two five a year. So that's good news. We knock uh, some of the stuff off of that. And my last thing, I'd like to introduce Ronald Kaler. Ron, if you could stand up, please. He is the new Community Service Officer that we have hired. His first day was today. His resolution is in the consent agenda for your approval, and you can ask him any questions you want. He's ready to answer.
Awesome, Leonard.
That is all I have, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like removed and discussed separately? And if not, I need a motion to approve. So moved. Second. Call the roll.
Yes. Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Okay, number seven, ordinance is third reading. Uh, ordinance twenty-two eighty-three, amending ninety-two point zero-two rates for service by increasing water rates for service inside the city and outside the city. So moved. Second. Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
I'll be there tonight.
Who adopt?
Good.
Second. Call the roll.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, B, third reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-four, setting new sewer rates for the city of Boone, section ninety-eight point zero-two, one and two. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
To adopt. Second. Call the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Mormons.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, I have no comments this evening. Number nine, any council member comments?
I do have just one. That, um, whether we can talk about it tonight or put on the agenda for another night. But um, I wanted to see if there was any way that, like the southeast Marshall and thirty right there by Moffitt's. If there's any way that would be any safer. Um, I know there's been a lot of fatalities there and I just don't feel like we can keep allowing that to happen. I also had a couple of constituents uh, contact me about that. What's the D O T's current read, sir?
So I'll tell you that your police chief a few months back had already reached out to D O T and asked them about changing that speed limit uh, from east of the, east of uh, Airport Road where the city limits start from fifty-five to forty-five, just slowing down coming in. The speed limit right there is forty-five. Uh, I don't think that we should talk really about that accident because we don't have a final uh, report from I H P on it. Uh, I think we need to wait and, and see what that accident says. But I would tell you that your police chiefs already reached out before this to ask about that. And I, I'd ask that you just give us time to see how that shakes out.
On, on top of that, I, I, one more.
Absolutely.
Um, each year we do a grant with the state of Iowa for special traffic enforcement. Um, and with that, they uh, have an allotment for some equipment that we get essentially cost-free. And in this current year, they've allowed us, they've opened up what those options were. Typically, it was a new um, in-car camera or a new radar system or something. Um, this year they, they open that up. So what I actually um, requested and was approved for was um, those flashing speed radar signs like they have now by Luther. Um, I am waiting uh, for the D O T to approve those to be put on Highway thirty, but I'm I believe those will be, that will be granted eventually. Um, and then I I wore those as I can, so.
Another thing along those same lines, same person uh asked me about this uh high speeds on Kate Shelley. Uh, and they had suggested that looking into some mobile speed bumps, that would be possible or not, just to. Look into it, see if there's anything that can be done about high speeds in that area.
Yeah, you should. We're out on Kate Shelley, like, you know.
The entire lengths, essentially.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
West of story or east of story, like on the the residential side of it?
Yeah, the residential.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 past the church.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
So. Thank you.
Cool.
I have a comment on um, just wanna let you know that the um Main Street group, which is called Downtown Boone. Is still working on on the whole process of becoming a Main Street community. And they are having an event on February twenty-eighth. Um, and are planning on meeting with many of the Boone organizational leaders, inviting them in so they're informed about what it is, because last time it was all so quick that. Many said they really didn't know what what Main Street was. Um, and we've invited ten directors from Main Street communities uh surrounding us. Uh, we've got. Um, Jefferson, Mason City, Story City, Marshalltown, Jewel, Grundy Falls, Iowa Falls, um, probably Ames. Uh, they've all committed to coming, and so they're going to share. Um, in a panel kind of the information about Main Street and what's what difference it's made for their community. So I think that'll be a real positive step in that direction of just continuing to get the word out.
Yeah. Any other council comments? Any public comments for items not on the agenda? If not, I need a motion to go into.